Hey everybody, this is Coach Ashley. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. We are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Killwine. We've got Jess and Colin here on the team as well. Say hi, everybody. Let's break bunch this. I always forget to do this.
Hey, everybody.
Hey.
Good morning.
Free Thursday.
I love this when it looks more like a party. So, all right, the blues in the house, raise your hands. Who wants a party here today? We've got some fun things to share with you. What's up? I see you. Look at those hands. All right, so today we're going to share some really exciting information, including some updates to the system, some of which a lot of us have been really excited to see for a long time. If you've ever wanted to customize the way your member area looks a little more, I think you're going to jump out of your seat, stick around for that update. Today, we're going to train on funnels, specifically landing pages. We're going to go deep on that. If you've got the download in your email, then you'll be able to follow along. But of course, if you catch this as a recording, we'll have links below the video for you to catch the slides that you can download and use to walk yourself through the process, as well as a planner to help you make sense of the whole deal. So without further ado, hello from all over the world. I just saw Sweden pop up here. Hi, that's awesome. So excited to have you guys here today. So we're going to go ahead and turn off our videos and share the screen and get on with the show here. Tell you a little bit about how this thing is going to go down today. All right. There we go. All right, so welcome. This is the Get Growing Weekly Work Session, and this is going to be the first in a series of trainings on funnels. Funnels are a really important thing that you should have working for you on multiple levels of your business, and they're not really complicated if you've got the pieces and the strategy together. And so over this series of videos using tools that have been given to you, you'll be able to put these to use for a number of exciting uses in your business. So if you came here today with questions, this is a live work session. This is designed for you to get the help that you need in a live setting. Add those questions to the Q and A so that we can be here to support you, and we will have live help at the close of our call. So here's what's in store today. This is a big session. First, we are going to announce the winner of the Rose Oil Giveaway. Really exciting stuff. We're going to do a training on landing pages. We're going to learn about some exciting new Get Oiling updates that are going to make things really simple and easy for you to use, and also just a cool experience for your members and leads and team who use your site. And of course, we'll have that live help Q and A. So maybe just a quick show of hands. Who here entered the drawing to win rose oil during aroma sharing? If you're here and you entered to win a bottle of rose oil during aroma sharing, raise your hand. Today, we've got some exciting news for you. So as promised, we said we would hold this drawing in July, and we did. And the winner is Erin Schall. Now she wasn't able to be here with us today, but...
So I just got home and I was reading my emails, and I found one that said, "Congratulations, you're the winner." And I said, "Winner? Winner of what? I won a free bottle of rose. Are you kidding me? That is so exciting. I cannot believe that I got a free bottle of rose oil. I never win anything, so thank you very much, and I am very excited."
All right, so congratulations, Erin. You guys leave some congratulatory messages there for her. Let her know how excited you are for her to get that bottle of rose oil, and thank you all for being a part of the aroma sharing experience. We're really honored to be a part of that. All right, so today's training. First, we're going to go into what landing pages are, the two different types of landing pages that you can create and use with your Get Oiling system, the elements of a great landing page, how to use a landing page, and then, of course, the live Q and A after our training. So if you catch this as a recording and you want to join us live in the future, or you want to share this link with your team so they can get help and learn these things as well, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession will get you onto these live free calls where we can help you out every week. All right, so first, I want you to grab that worksheets. We sent a worksheet out to you. If you're on our list, you'll have a link below the recording on YouTube of this. I want you to use this funnel planner every time you set out to create a thing that you want to automate in your business. All right, so what is the goal? What are the steps that your person will need to follow in order for you to reach that goal? What are you promising in exchange for their contact information and so on? So I want you to just see that this is here, and I want to tell you a little bit about kind of how this planner works. I'll break it down really simply here. When you've got a funnel, you are creating an opportunity for people to engage with a set of information to have them perform a specific action. So that specific action is the goal of this funnel. So let's just think about this from like a leads perspective. If you want to generate leads of, you know, these are people who are interested in a specific thing that you like to talk about and that you know could lead to a great conversation that might get somebody started with Young Living, then you might create blog posts or videos. But then if they watch the video or blog post, you want to give them an opportunity to get in touch with you and give them a reason to. So the goal of this funnel, in this case, would be to generate interested leads. So what are the steps that they need to follow? They need to enter their information on a page, get something that is valuable to them, and then, of course, get on the phone with you. So what you want to do is just kind of break down the whole of what you want to accomplish here. And of course, over the next few trainings, we're going to break down how you're going to use each step of this process. So how many of you who are here today have a funnel? Maybe just one funnel that's working for you and your business? Maybe it's for your leads, right? Maybe it's to get your members automatically into their learning resources? Maybe you have a funnel that breaks down and teaches the starter kit so that you don't have to do all of that, that work yourself with every single person who gets started? So you may already have something like this working for you in your business, but I want you to understand that there's a lot of different ways that you can put this to work for you. So a landing page is really the main thing that most people see when you, when you engage with a funnel, because the landing page is a front door to the funnel. All right, all a funnel does, if you imagine like the shape of a funnel being, you know, kind of like the one that you use to pour liquid, you know, from a wide mouth into a smaller container, what you're trying to do is get the whole lot of people who are up on top move down to sorting out, filtering through to the people who are most interested, most ready, or, you know, basically moving them down and isolating toward a specific action, right? So your landing page is what initiates that process. That's what gets people into your contact manager, tags them, and tells you what it is that they're interested in, and of course, guides you toward the kinds of things that you can be showing them, you know, how you can segment the different types of information you share, whether it's for members, for leads, and so on. So what a landing page does, being the front door of your funnel, is that it offers something specific in exchange for contact information, right? This can offer a guide, video, newsletter, an email series. That's called a lead magnet, right? So if you land on a page that says, "Hey, enter your name and email and get my guide for..." dot, 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 right? That's a, that's the front door of your funnel. That's a landing page. What it's offering is what's called a lead magnet. All right, so a lead magnet is the thing that is valuable and interesting enough to your ideal person that they would give you their contact information and permission to get in contact with them in exchange for that thing that you're giving away, all right? The front door of your funnel, a landing page, also collects contact information and tags your contact. And this is really critical for organization. Using tags in your contact manager allows you to only contact exactly the right people with the right information, right? You don't want to send, you know, an education series about the starter kit to everyone who ever signed up to get information from you on your blog, for instance. You want to share that specifically with people who have signed up for a Young Living membership, right? So you tag for that purpose, and your landing page can actually automatically apply those tags for you and sorts out and produces the ability for you to filter accurately your contacts, all right? It also automatically delivers the thing that they came for, right? So you sign up on a landing page, and that is going to, once they fill out their information, send them right away the thing that they want to see. And then, of course, we send in a series of email or text information after they opt in, ideally moving them toward that thing that you want them to do, such as getting on a call with you, having a one-on-one conversation with you, or engaging in a future live event or something like that, right? And that thing, that automatic series of messages that's delivered after someone enters the funnel via a landing page is called a campaign. Now, over the next few weeks, we're going to be breaking down these elements. Today, we are talking about that front door, the landing page, the first thing that you see. We will be getting into lead magnets and campaigns, these other components of your funnel in future videos. So let's talk about your landing page. There are two ways to create a landing page inside of Get Oiling. First is with our landing pages feature. So this is what a landing page looks like on the Get Oiling platform. But this isn't the only way that you are capable of getting those leads into your funnel and into your system to obviously move them toward the next things that you want them to do. So what else you can also do is on another type of page, which is a custom page, you can create a pop-up form, right? So on a custom page, this could be the homepage of your website, where a pop-up comes up, where you click a button, and then this form comes up over here on the right. So this is the other type of landing page that you can create in the custom pages feature in Get Oiling. So this would be a dedicated page, and the only thing that's on this is the landing page or the lead form. And the other option being custom pages, which can have a lot of other content and could even be the front page of your website that has a pop-up that looks a little bit like this. And then on custom pages, you actually have the ability to add more questions into your lead form. So if you wanted to survey or qualify your leads or get more information from them when they sign up to get what you're giving away, this is how you would pull that off. All right, so I'm going to show you how each of these things are set up. But first, let's talk about strategy, all right? You don't want to go and try to dive into the tech, especially if you're unfamiliar with it, if you don't know what you want it to do for you or what it's going to say. So 90% of the work that you do is before you even sign into your Get Oiling account, all right? So first, you have to ask yourself, and this is what we're going to use that worksheet for, what outcome are you looking for? Are you wanting to generate leads who have a specific interest? In that case, you give away a lead magnet on your landing page. If you want to promote an upcoming event, right? So if you were going to do a live Zoom call that teaches something, right? Whether that's oily or not, you can give away in the campaign or on a page, a Zoom link and further information about that upcoming event, right? So you can use a landing page to RSVP for live events and treat this like a webinar funnel, okay? You can also automate your new, your member newsletter opt-in. This is really ideal for you to put in place, no matter how big your team is, because I promise you, once you start getting into the thousands or even hundreds of members on your team, you're going to wish that you had something that allowed people to basically opt themselves in so that you don't have to do all of the heavy lifting all the time. So what you would do here is look up this training, and we'll put this in the description box on YouTube for the recording here. We have a training that teaches you how to use our, a funnel to educate your members in less than an hour per month. Basically, what this means is, is you use a landing page, and then you attach a campaign to it, which is a funnel, basically. And in this case, in that training, we're actually using, I believe it was Grow Workspace's content. So it's, it's actually something you can set up very quickly. So another way that you can use landing pages is to automate access to your vaults. So if you have a member education vault, for instance, and you've got thousands of people on your team, and you don't want to manually add every single one of them, you can put a link in your Facebook group or in your email signature that you send to your, your members and say, you know, "Come here to get exclusive access to our member education resources," and that landing page that you link them to can automatically place them inside of a Get Oiling vault. All right, so we're going to plan our funnel out first. Now that we know what we want our funnel to do for us, now we're going to plan the elements. It's important that we begin with the end in mind here. Again, the whole point of a funnel is to produce a result, right? You want a lead who is interested in speaking with you. You want a member who opts themselves in to receive the information that you're sending out to everyone every month. You want somebody to take an action and you to get a result, all right? So you begin with the end in mind, and then you think about what their reason is for opting in. A lead magnet to a lead is going to be something that is, you know, a checklist or an article or a video or training, something that helps them get a result, right? If this is not for leads and it's for your members, you have to let them know what the benefit is. You're going to automatically receive the beautiful education once a week or what have you. Give them the reason why. Why would they do this? Why would they take this action that you want them to take? So what are you promising? How does this tie into your bigger strategy? And then, you know, what is this for, right? Do you want to get leads? Do you want to automate your education for members? Or do you want to, you know, move people towards sales calls? So that's what you want to make sure you figure out first. What are you giving them and what's that going to lead to in the bigger strategy? Then we're going to figure out the campaign. The campaign should always first link to your lead magnet. It should drip information, and this is optional, but it's usually ideal. You're going to drip information that moves them toward next steps. This is specifically not optional if this is for leads. If it's for members, you may not necessarily need to write a drip campaign. You may use an educational funnel campaign that you can get from Grow Workspace or one of our other content partners. And then finally, the landing page. And we're actually building backwards in terms of like, you know, what, what we're teaching in this order, because it usually makes sense that you see the thing, right? Like you see the landing page, and that's what you think of when you think of a funnel. So that's why we're doing this first today. So the landing page is then finally, it ties everything together. It's going to promise the lead magnet and set expectations for what follows, all right? Now, what's going to go on a landing page? What do we put there? There are three elements here. You've got copy. This is literally the words you use or copywriting. That's your headline, that's short and attention-grabbing. You've got a body of information, and this is pretty short too, and it needs to be to the point. Tell them what they're going to get, what it's going to do for them. You can add a little anecdote here to tease out a little bit of info, you know, just so that they're very curious and want to get to the other side of that landing page. The next thing is creative, and all this really means is that we need to have an image that speaks to what we're offering. We don't stop liking picture books as we get older. The average attention span of a human in the digital age is about that of a goldfish, about eight seconds. And if you've got something that is visually engaging, you're much more likely to grab attention and get someone to do the thing that you want them to do. That's ultimately what we're trying to do here. We want them to take an action that serves an end that we have, and we're going to help them see what's in it for them so that they do it, all right? And then finally, critically, a call to action, because again, we're trying to take, get them to take an action, right? So you tell them how to take action. You gotta tell them what to do, and the only thing that they're supposed to do, or they're not going to do anything, all right? So let's break this down visually so that you can see what this looks like. First, we're going to show you using a Get Oiling landing page template. So this is a landing page, and this is actually one that I teach inside of Martha Creachy's Go For Gold. You can go to get oiling.com/goforgold if you don't know about that. So here are the components of this landing page. So you remember I talked about copy, creative, and call to action, right? So the copy is the writing, okay? So the headline here, "Some fads really are worth following." And then the body, "Get my guide: Three Ways Being Crunchy Can Change Your Life and Learn How You Can Put This Trend to Work for Your Wellness." The anecdote, number three, had me feeling 10 years younger in a matter of months. That anecdote really does kind of serve to be like the cherry on top to pique curiosity here. You don't have to do this, but I highly recommend that you do. You want to create an element of, "Ooh, I want that," and not, "Oh, that sounds nice, so what?" Right? Now, you also want to have some kind of an engaging image. When you see this in action later, you'll actually see that this broccoli-covered donut is in fact an animated gif that spins, and it's really kind of funny and cute, and it's eye-catching. So these are all things that go into a good landing page. And then finally, importantly, the call to action. In this case, our call to action is on the button, "Get my guide." Now, everything you see here is editable on a Get Oiling page, and I'll show you what the breakdown looks like right now. All right, so here are the settings to create a page like this for yourself. First, this landing page example uses style nine. You're going to get there by heading over to the Contacts menu, clicking Landing Pages, hitting that Create button after you select one of these landing page styles. You can use anything as a template and swap out to your liking, the images, the copy, the style. All of that is editable, all right? So the first thing we're going to do, once we open that up and we start making our pages, we're going to go to the page settings, and I want to break down what these things mean, all right? So under our landing page settings, of course, you're going to give it a name. And when you give it a name, it's automatically going to generate a link path. You're going to apply a campaign to this, because you want, once they enter their information, for them to start receiving information from you, right? The things that will move them toward taking the next steps that you want them to take, all right? So the campaign serves that purpose. And then, of course, you want to add a tag. So this will tell you what landing page they opted in on, if you wanted to add lead here, so that you know that these are leads and not necessarily your members. That's something that you could do as well. You can actually add a lot of tags here if you want, but you obviously always need to use tags when you set up these landing pages. So if this is for a newsletter, make the tag newsletter. If this tag is for a live event, give the tag a name of the live event that they're signing up to attend, okay? Now, this show a message after registration option is optional, all right? You can show this if you're not going to use a thank you page. This is a perfectly acceptable option for you if you're not using or don't have access in your plan to a lot of custom pages, although I do recommend if you're, you know, if you're being serious about your lead generation and getting leads to come into your funnel who are strangers to you, who find you on YouTube and so on, highly recommend that you do have a thank you page that you redirect to so that you are basically pushing their attention straight toward their inbox to make sure they got your email. All right, so you can show that there. The call to action you could put on this pop-up message here in lieu of a thank you page could certainly be something to the effect of, "Hey, you know, you'll receive what you came for in just a second. Make sure you go to your email right now and look for this email from me and add my email address to your contacts list so that you don't miss anything from me." And this will help keep your emails from going to spam. And then, of course, we'll make sure that your people are actually getting what they came for. All right, so down here underneath that field where we've got, "After registration, send your visitor to", what you can do here, if you have a lead magnet that lives on a custom page or, you know, it's a PDF that has an address in your system, you can add that URL here so that once they enter their information, they then land on that page where they get what they came for, okay? You could also put right here, if you're using a thank you page, put the URL right there, right? So that again means that they're going to receive what they came for via a link in their email as opposed to getting that after they opt in on the landing page, okay? So that's where we send them after registering. Then, of course, you want to require certain fields, name and email, always require those. If you're using any text marketing in your campaign or you just want to make sure honestly that you get better quality leads, require that they add their phone number, all right? And then add to vaults. This is great if you want to use a funnel to move your members, and you have a big team, you want to move your members into your Get Oiling-based member education vault, right? If you're someone who's trying to move off of Facebook, because that's kind of a crazy place to be right now, even in private groups, this would be a great way for you to automate and allow people to self-select to enter and receive those resources. So if you wanted to transfer over from, say, being on a Facebook group to moving over to a Get Oiling member vault, then you can actually create a landing page that adds your people directly to a vault, right? So you can see funnels aren't just used for leads. They're very much used for efficiency inside your business as well, to categorize and organize your people and to provide them with a clear path that you can be hands-off about to receive the things that they need to get from you. All right, now, below this, you're going to find Advanced Settings. Now, you don't have to do anything with this, although I do recommend that you change the title bar text. If you don't do this, it's just going to show your name in the browser tab in the title bar. It'll just have your name, but you can change it to something that's a little closer to the, the copy on your landing page here. All right, in terms of lead notification settings, it's totally up to you. If you don't want to be notified about new leads, let's, let's just say, for instance, you do have a few hundred or a few thousand or a whole lot of thousands of people who are on your team, and you don't want to get an email from our system every single time somebody opts in to get access to your member area, then hit Do Not Notify. But if this is for leads, get that notification for new contacts so that you can follow up with those leads who are engaging with your content and wanting to move closer down to that narrow part of the funnel where they come out on the other side as your members. All right, if you are using Facebook advertising and want to retarget, these two, these two links here or these areas here are useful for that, and you can find out more about those when you hover over the little info, little icon there. We'll show you what to do with that. All right, now, let's talk about the, the stuff you see on the page. Since we've gone over the settings, after you save those settings, you're going to edit the page itself. You can change the image out by clicking that little swap image here over on the lower left. And then everything that you see here that's yellow is editable, right? So you just hover your, you know, hover your clicker over and select the text and type in what you want. You can change the look of it, you can change the size of it, color, whatever you like. And then, of course, even these fields here where you see name, email, and phone, you could say your name or, you know, whatever else you want to put there, all right? And really importantly, you guys, when you edit this button, because you can change the copy on this button, right? You can change it from "Unlock This Secret," which is what it comes with, to "Get my Guide," only edit the text on this, not the link, all right? This, this link over here will cause this to not work for you if you change it. So change the text here, and you'll be good to go. All right, now, and we're going to show you what that looks like here in just a bit. Let's go ahead and break down the settings and the setup of a landing page using Get Oiling Custom Pages with that pop-up lead form. So this is what this looks like when it's all said and done, similar to what we saw on the other one. We've got a headline, we've got calls to action. You see this very specific, "Click the button below now." That's a specific call to action. And of course, the rest of the body says basically the same thing, right? The anecdotes there, cute pics there, and of course, that catchy headline, all right? This is what the pop-up looks like. When they click that button, this pops up on the page. Now, I'm repeating the headline here, "Get my Guide," and then, of course, repeating the body again with the specific call to action. "Enter your information below now." You see how specific I'm being here? Be specific, because people, I'm telling you, it seems obvious, but people will not do what you want them to do unless you tell them what and how to do it, okay? Be super, super specific. Let them know what's in it for them, what they can expect, and be clear. It's not pushy, there's nothing, you know, there, there's nothing aggressive about it. They want to get something from you, tell them what to do to get it, all right? Now, here are the settings for this page. So where, where you're going to go in the Get Oiling system to find this is over on the left-hand column, you're going to go to My Site Settings, click Custom Pages, and create a new page. Now, whatever you choose, it doesn't matter. You don't have to, you know, you can pick a blank section or a blank page, or you can use a template. But I'm going to show you how to set this up. It's going to be really simple for you. So first, we're going to address our page settings. We're going to open Page Settings, the button right there. And then you are going to set it up basically like this. Again, give it a name, include the title bar text. What do you want it to say when they see it in the browser? And then you have an option here under Where Pages Shown. You're going to use those settings for a page that you don't want just anyone to find. So if, you know, if you have a funnel that, you know, you don't want just anyone on the web to be able to find it and enter their information. Let's just say, for instance, it's a funnel that is going to link them with an opportunity to get on your schedule and have a call with you. You would want that really only available to those that you've made it available to, right? And not just anyone. So in that case, you wouldn't want to go by link only. If this is a funnel that is made for, you know, getting your team on an automated basis into your vault, obviously, you don't want that to be able to show up in Google search results either. So in those cases, you're going to want to use by link only. Now, if this is just a general lead magnet, that can be Pages Shown Everywhere option, that'll work fine. But just be mindful, when you select everywhere, that means anyone can eventually find it. All right, the other options, the header footer, header menu and footer here. I always leave those unselected on custom pages, because when you are setting up a funnel, when I'm making a funnel, these are never checked. Does anybody know the reason why? Anybody here, maybe a quick show of hands? Let's see if somebody knows. Why, why do we not put any other option of, of a link or a thing to click on a landing page? Team, see if somebody, leave a comment if you think you know. I want to give somebody a gold star. Why do you leave these unchecked on a landing page?
There is something to not distract.
Yes, yes, gold star. That's exactly right. So what we want to do when we create a landing page is, is to give them one option. So what we want to do when we create a landing page is is to give them one option, right? Because if we give them two, they won't take either. Okay, so the whole point of this is to take, to generate specific direct action. So you don't want to give them an option to do anything else. All right, so I leave the header and menu off and the footer off as well. Another important thing with the footer, if you leave the footer off, it's not going to, what's the best way to put this? If you're focused on branding yourself and everything Young Living is behind the curtain and people have to get in, become a lead and qualify for a conversation with you before Young Living becomes part of the conversation, you want to remove the footer, because that's going to have some of sort of the stock information that again would provide other links as well. But but they're not going to have a clear, visible indication of a connection to the next step, right? So just remove the footer if you are doing personal branding there. All right, now, lead capture settings, this is where we scroll just a little bit down on the settings for this page. I don't typically put a lead capture headline in there. I like to be able to really format the text the way I want it to look. So I just add the information and lead capture message here. So as you can see, the copy, it's really just the same as it was on the other landing page. I've centered it, formatted it, all that kind of good stuff. Make sure that the copy here is going to reiterate what you actually put on your page, including that clear call to action. Enter your information below now, right? Really clear. All right, so here are the rest of the settings for this page. Again, if your campaign will have text, or you really just want to make sure that your leads are top notch quality, require a phone number. Edit your lead pop up preferences over here on the left. The way that I like to do this, because they will be clicking a button, right? We're telling them the call to action is to click the button to be able to receive the information. So clicking the button will pop up the form. But what I also like to pick maybe just one other or two other options where, let's just say, they try to leave the page. So their cursor goes off the page, it'll pop up and be like, hey, you want to get this, right? So that's an option for you as well. Now you want to, of course, just like we did in the other one, attach your campaign, attach your tag. If you want to use a vault, if this is to, you know, add your people via a funnel to your member education, add them immediately to a vault that way. And you can change what it says around, you know, the opt in labels, submitting your info means you agree to get emails from me, that kind of thing. All this is editable. And then finally, you redirect to your thank you page or your lead magnet, or maybe your funnel adds people to your lead group or points people to your lead group on Facebook, right? Enter your information, enter your information here and get an exclusive invite to join our community, right? And then it'll redirect them over to your Facebook page. That's another way you can use this. So wherever it is that you want them to go after they after they enter their information, you put that link over here after registration, send them to this URL. All right, now getting into advanced settings. This is for those of you guys who are, well, wanting to be more advanced with this. Obviously, you can edit your notification settings here so you can choose how frequently or whether you are contacted by our system when you, when someone opts in on this page. But what you can do here in the meta description, if you guys are working with SEOs, specifically SEO strategies to get found on Google. And you know, if you're using Pinterest, this is something that you want to look at this page as well. So this one in the top is going to show your search engine result pages, or it will show on those pages. And it'll let readers know what this page is about. If, again, this is something that would be visible to the rest of the world, right? So maybe not something that's exclusively for team or that like gives good access to you. Then you could make this something that is enticing when it shows up on Google. Any custom HTML tags you like to add here are good for Facebook sharing and Pinterest. All that information is here for you. And then, of course, when you're sharing down here at the bottom, custom sharing description, this is kind of like, you know, here's the blurb for it. If you wanted to actually share this in a post, this is the information that would populate when you put that link up there on social media. You don't need to do this, you guys, especially if this is going to serve a specific internal purpose of like member communication or something like that. But if it is something that you want available to the general public, do recommend that you at least change the custom sharing description here so that you can share this on social so that, so that it looks nicer and does the thing that you want it to do. All right, so here's the setup of the page, the visual. First, doesn't matter what you start with here. If you click that little teal bar with the plus sign up at the top and you select the two column photo on left, text on right, you're going to be able to get what we used for this. And that is the only section that's on this landing page. So the first thing you're going to do is replace the image, right? So you're going to actually see, if you look at this, you're going to see that it's going to have that little laptop image. You're going to swap that image out and replace it with the one that you like. You're going to edit the copy on the page. And again, looking at this, that's going to say header here, you're just going to edit that text that's there. You edit your copy to your liking, you can change the paragraph settings as I've shown here. And then we edit the button, right? So you click that little edit link pencil and then importantly, you're going to leave the hashtag or put the hashtag if it's not there already, lead. Make sure that is there and do not select open in new tab so that the pop up will work. And then, of course, you can change the text right there, just change it in the field here. It's a lot easier than trying to edit it on the page. All right, and then, of course, once you've got those things saved to your liking or done to your liking, always save it, view it, test it. Enter your own information in, make sure that the redirect goes where you want it to go. And then make sure that you received the email campaign that you wanted to have attached to it. All right, so who's excited to get to work on this? Who's excited to edit up your landing page to make them work the way you want them to? Who is, tell me in the comments, what are you going to create a funnel to do? So that the next funnel you make, what is it going to do for your business? While you guys are adding those to the comments, I'm excited to read them here in just a minute. We've got some new updates to the system that Greg with his magic wand has been working hard at here over the last couple of weeks. First, thank you to all of you for being a part of this community and and being a part of the evolution of this platform. These things that we have that Greg creates, they are a direct response to you using this stuff, putting it to work in your business and asking us for ways that the system can work better for you. So everything here is a response to you using this and us being here to help you get results. So first, GetOiling vaults have a new look and we're going to show you what that looks like here in just a bit. You can now drag and reorder your vaults in your member area. Maybe a quick show of hands, who's really excited to see that happen? Yes, really, really excited to see that. So now, if you've got a bunch of vaults in your member area, you can choose which things are, you know, you know, in the order of the list, if it's in mobile or how it will show up on a screen. You also have a new search bar in custom pages. So if you're like me and you got a ton of custom pages and you don't want to have to, you know, click through four different pages to find that one, because they're alphabetized, you can now search for the name and find it a lot quickly in your custom pages menu. And then you also have that same search bar in saved replies. So if you want to edit a newsletter or a specific one that maybe you got from one of our amazing content providers, you've got the ability to do that as well. You can also get a pop up contact form on your blog. So if you create a link or put an image and link it so it looks like a button, then it says contact me and you put hashtag contact in the URL field, it's going to pop up on your blog, a form where people can contact you directly. Really cool. You can also rate your contacts when you upload them. So let's just say, for instance, you did a, you did a vendor event and you want to take that list of names that you got from the vendor event and you want to upload them and make sure that they are tagged as a hot lead. So you're reminded every three days to make sure that you followed up with that person in the system. You can now do that when you upload. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Greg to screen share. We'll show you what those two funnels look like on the front page and then we'll go and show you some of these updates and get to your questions.
Thanks, Ashley, can you make me co-host here so I can?
Sure can, yes.
Don't have it quite yet. I think I saw.
Oh, I made Amanda co-host. All right, there we go, Greg is co-host.
There we go. All right, let's get the screen shared out here. Yeah, so are you seeing it here?
Okay. Yes.
Awesome, okay. So just kind of stepping through these different new features. So the the vaults, we'll start with that one here. So the reordering, basically, when you go to your vaults screen, which is, if you're not familiar with that, go down to your member area link here in the my site menu, click on that and then click on vaults. And if you have more than one vault, there's now, well, it actually shows it for everybody, but there's this little drag to reorder thing. So if you'd like to, you can just take this and pull this to the top and then it'll save or whatever order that you want. And it'll just update over here. And to go with that, I mean, I know this has been a long requested feature because some people want to, want all their faults to be in specific order. And it does, before it would just alphabetize them. So people had to do things like putting spaces in front of the name to make things jump. This just makes it so much more straightforward, so you can get the vault order that you'd like. To go with that, we did also improve the look of the vault itself, like, or the member area dashboard, I should say. So over here is the new and updated look. This is Jane, you know, our demo account here, Jane's demo account. But the part that's changed is down here on the bottom. Instead of the vaults being before, they, I think they were two columns, kind of left and right with the button in there. Now this is like the full width experience with the larger picture. It's also mobile friendly if you shrink your screen down or if you're on a mobile phone, which is really awesome as well. Yeah, so those are, and your your buttons show up over there. It's kind of basically takes what you have and makes it hopefully look better with a better layout. And so the next thing there are the searchable pages and saved replies. So those are in the various parts of the system. We had added this for campaigns some time ago and we got a lot of requests like, hey, that was really awesome for campaigns. Can we also do this for these other parts of the system? And now the answer is yes, you can. So previously, we had campaigns under contact settings here in the menu and clicking on campaigns. We had added the search box some time ago. But now it also works for like the saved replies, which I'll show you here. There's now this little box, you can see this demo account has a lot of saved replies. So if I just search for, I see one says the word campaign in there. So I'll just search for that and you can see it narrows it down and then you can quickly find what you're looking for instead of having to go through page after page after page of those, especially if you've got a lot of them. And the same also goes for your pages, the website pages, which under my site and then settings down here in the menu, there's custom pages, there's also the box here too. I see one that says, whoops, learn, I have to type it correctly, learn, and then it'll pop up and ready, ready to go to narrow it down for you so you can edit it. Yeah, so those are, those are pretty exciting. I know those came from requests from various people, which is nice to be able to get these into place here. And I think the other two here, now we have the contact rating and import. That one's a little difficult to demo, but I'll just talk about that a little bit. What it is, if you have a file that you're importing, you can add a column for contact rating in there, like if you have it in a spreadsheet. You can add the rating of the zero through five on there and it will bring that in now. It's a new field that you can choose during the import process. Actually, I can, I do remember, I do have a file that I can show you. So under contact settings and then import, where you're importing a file, when you choose your file, there is, let's see here, this is the right one, I think this is the right one here. There is a, yeah, contact rating. So this file that I have has a rating field in it. So when you're choosing, if it doesn't automatically detect that it's a rating, just go ahead and choose from this field on the import process, the contact rating. It has to be a zero through a five. I can see this is a seven, because I was making sure that it would actually do zero through five. But yeah, basically, it's, it'll put that in there right when you import the contact as well. So I know there are, you know, other contact rating systems out there. This makes it just so much easier to bring that over, as well as you can just do that. Like, like Ashley was saying, if you have a vendor event and you've got them all typed in the spreadsheet, add another column for rating and put a five in there or whatever number that you want. You can even do individuals before you import it. So that's pretty exciting. And then finally here for the demos, we've got the, or the new features. The blog post editor now supports a, let's see if Jane has any blog posts. Okay, here, so I'll edit this one here, this one that exists and go to the bottom and, or I'll say, or drop me a note. Here, by clicking here and then, so I'll lose, I'll just highlight clicking here. Add a link and put in slash contact. And so now what that'll do, I'll have to go ahead and publish this. Or save it anyway, and then I'll view the post here. And at the bottom now, there's going to be this new link which pops up the contact me box right from your blog, which is another way of capturing a lead. I think there's also a landing page tucked in here, but just kind of gives you a demo of being able to do both of that. So yeah, those are some exciting new features, I think. And and I know, Ashley, there was some, the landing pages that you wanted to show too, right? I've got, I think, I think I've got those tabs open here. Are you wanting me to demo just?
Oh, yeah, just showing this page itself and then maybe if we can view it so that they can see.
Yeah, so this landing page right here, I'll show you how to get to that in the menu since I just had it on the tab. Oh, and we've got some comments about our new banner here. This this shows up on Thursday mornings before the weekly work session. Actually, our attendance is a little bit up today, so hey, maybe it's working. That's awesome. So under, under context and landing pages over here is where the, I guess these are the two that are named the same. But I assume this is, yeah, probably both the same. Just click on that and that's where it takes you to the editor here where, as Ashley was showing you, you can customize these things. If you didn't want to say, say name, you could say, first name, for example, and it updates that. But I won't save it, I'll just go ahead and view it. Well, it's asking me to save it, so I'll change it back to name and then save and view. And this is what it'll look like to somebody who's visiting there. See, we've got a typo here, we can fix that too, show you how that's editable. Just click on the button, change it around, whoops, and save. And you can refresh it right there and then it's corrected. So yeah, you can totally customize this. This is a really easy way to get a landing page set up in a couple of minutes. Nice, simple, clean, and you know, you can optionally hide your story on there as well. I think some people have asked about that. Just a quick sidebar to hide that, that's under my story. When you go to the menu, go to my story and photo down here. And you can actually scroll down below your story and then say you don't want it on landing pages. And that'll make it all disappear off of there. So depending on what you're doing, that can be a useful addition too. So for the, for the pages, that's under my site settings and then custom pages here in the menu. And let's see, this one is, some fads are really worth following.
It's, it's called get my guide.
Oh, okay, easy enough. There it is, so this is what it looks like in the editor. You know, there's more flexibility here on the editor than there is with the landing page editor. But under settings here is where you can see all the lead capture settings that have, are plugged in here. I'll show you what that does here in a minute. So this is what appears in the pop up, these are the fields that are going to show up, all these different settings. So I'll go ahead and view this now. And this is the page, simple and clean. I know there were a couple of questions in the chat about how do I get the footer to disappear? Well, the page builder is your best friend there, because it completely lets you take all that off of there. So it's literally just this page, there's nothing else but the little spinny donut here and the nice text with the button. So if I click the button, or in this case, I moved my mouse out of there, it popped up the box. Those are the lead capture settings that are, that Ashley mentioned. This is what it looks like. You can see that essentially this, what's under settings here, this get my guide is what shows up here in the box. And then you hear name, email, phone and so on. So yeah, so that's the, that's that page builder part. So was there anything else?
Yeah, so there, there were some questions, actually, while we're here and you see an editor here. We had a question of how to get a PDF into the system so that they can maybe use that as like the redirect link.
Yeah, the, I won't say this, but the easiest way to do that there on all the editors in the system, it doesn't really matter where you're at, as long as you see this little toolbar here. This functionality exists and it, it's always in this section. Sometimes it shows up right away, sometimes it doesn't, depending on where you're at. You might have to expand it, but there's an upload file button here. So if you click on upload file and then you can click to upload it, it'll put a link in here. And this demo account probably has a, yeah, it's got a PDF in here. I'll just use an existing one instead of uploading a new one. Of course, you can change this if you don't want the dot PDF on there. You can say, you can edit the link, for example, and say maybe, whoops, I didn't, I pushed the wrong keyboard keystroke there. I'll try that again here. So under settings, go back into lead capture settings and re-add my PDF that I was adding. And I was just going to click here and hit edit and change the link to, to something else. But I'll just leave that for now, delete off the PDF here and, and then, oh, weird, my keyboard is like not working. Anyway, so.
What I like to do, just, just to give you, like, if you want to make this a redirect, if you click that edit link, that you that URL right there, you want to copy that. And that, that, that's what you could use to link in your email response. Or put, or scrolling down, you can send them to that after registration, like if, if it is a lead magnet that you're sending them to.
Yep, yep, totally. So yeah, it works anywhere. I mean, this is, you know, this is another version of the editor. Like if you put the, put the PDF in here, you can see it works there. You can grab the link, it can go anywhere. It's, it's a link that works anywhere. So you can put it in here, you could share it wherever you want it to. So it's, it's totally just a web link that lets you get what you need in there.
Yeah. If you have like inside of your vaults as well, your memory area vaults. If you wanted to have, you know, downloadable guides and recipes and stuff like that, that's a great thing that you could put there as well. Um, all right. So we've got that. Thank you, Debbie, for that question. Heidi says, I'm setting up my first vault. It's for my young living members. For the reference and product education area, I created a page with links to landing pages that will generate a campaign. Is this a good way to disseminate information or is there a better way? There's no wrong way to disseminate the information. If you are using, if you're using grow workspace, for instance, for member education. There's, I mean, that, that's really some of the best member education I've seen because they have such a rich variety of things to engage with. What I really like to do and what I do with our private clients is, is we create an online class that, that basically loads up the information that you get inside of the grow workspace bundles. So people can go and engage with what they want, when they want. And while yes, you can absolutely have a landing page that offers every single bundle campaign, and you could absolutely do that. I like to add the text in option there, you know, to say, hey, if you want to receive this class as a series of text, text this code to your get oiling number. And, and so that way they have all of those options there and it's a little less work. You know, than, you know, to have to create a landing page for every single campaign that they produce. But you can do that. It's not like wrong to do that, do it that way. It's just a lot more work. All right. Sandra says, can I change the button color to fit with my brand?
So right now there, there's a, I mean, there's not an easy way to do that. It is possible that it's on our wishlist to be able to change the button colors a little bit. There are a variety of them in the page builder to choose from. And so a lot of people have been choosing, or, you know, let me just create a template here. I've been choosing one that's similar, but of course, exact colors are nice. On the left side, there's a variety of different colors here that you can choose from at the moment. Again, on our wishlist, hopefully not too far in the future.
Yeah. Hey, remember guys, if you have questions, make sure you come over to the Q and A so we don't miss it. We got a lot going on in the chat. And we don't want to miss anything from you. One of the things too, if you are creating custom pages that have buttons on them, if you have set up your custom colors and fonts inside of get oiling, you've set your branding up on those pages, then that's going to influence some of the colors that show up there as well. All right. Let's see. Julie says she wants to generate a leads guide for toxin free home, but I don't have a guide to a toxin free home. I am not sure. I can't speak to the content providers and who has what to that end, but I can say creating a PDF is actually really easy. Any word processor that you have, whether it's open office or pages on Mac or Microsoft Word, create a thing that talks about what you do, something you know, share something that you know how to do. And anyone, everyone here has the ability to do that. Space it out, make it look nice to read. It's, it's worth figuring out how to do, or you get that information and you, you know, pay somebody to do it for you, up to you. It's really not complicated. It wouldn't even be expensive to invest in having someone do, to do that for you. But what you can do with a, a word based word processor based file is you can save it as a PDF or you can export it to PDF as a format. And now you have your own unique thing, right? That you can brand to you, that's unique to you. It's really quite easy to do. If you allow yourself oil up for it and, and, and believe that you can, because you can, it's really, really not difficult to do that. And it should really take a great deal of time, especially if it's something that you already know, right? Everything that you offer should be something that's authentically tied to your life, your expertise, something that you know. So make something like that and have it be in your voice. People are going to like that so much more than something, excuse me, than something that sounds generic or something that clearly was written by somebody that's not you. All right. Michelle says, how do you show the vaults like for interest teaser, but let them have access, not let, to not let them have access, excuse me, unless they qualify. So is there a way to show vaults in the member area that people don't, that aren't able, they're not like automatically able to join?
Unless it's a paid vault, there really isn't any way to do that at the moment. That is another item that's on our wishlist to be able to, because right now, let me, I'll show you the setting that's there. When you go to your vaults. See here it goes. So go under my site settings, member area. When you're setting up your vaults, and I'll just choose one of these. There's a checkbox here to let others in the member area see and join the vault. And I think what people have been asking for is basically let others in the member area see this vault. And then somehow like request approval to get in essentially like, sort of like a Facebook group. And so I've been thinking, some thinking about that, how we could, how we could do that. But right now that's not possible to show it to them. I mean, there is kind of a workaround. You could come into the vault like down here where it says about this vault, which appears at the top, not here, but it appears at the top of the vault. Like if I go into this abundant wellness, you see this message here. Actually, where this would probably be would be on the dashboard. So I'll go back here and too many tabs here. I'll go back and show you where that message might be. So if you go on under my site, member area, and then click the member area button. There's a description here under personalization options, not on the login, but the dashboard message. You can see that shows up here. So what you could do is say, hey, I also have these vaults and say, if you'd like to get into them in this message box, this dashboard message. If you'd like to be into them, if you're not already in them, I don't know, however you want to be contacted, send me an email or text me or send me a Facebook message or whatever it is to let people in. So that's kind of a, an alternative at the moment.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. So just for what it's worth, if you have something, you know, like a, like a program or a specialty thing that really is something that you only want to have available to certain people, put a price on it. And you can actually add people to the vault and, and add them for free. So let's just say for instance, that you have a protocol or a coaching program, an online course that you've got inside of a vault. And for the general public, it's $300 and that's what they, you know, they gotta pay to be able to get in. You could have a message there that says, you know, if, if you're interested in getting started with this, you know, click here to book a call with me. And then the call booking funnel, which we learned a couple of videos back. You can, you know, then have that qualifying call, either have them decide that they want to sign up for $300 or whatever your price is. Or you can say, you can get in for the cost of product, right? And then sign them up and then give them access for free. All right. Let's see, there was another, just while we're still on vaults and member areas. Dana asks, do you recommend doing vaults from the start or wait until your team gets bigger? Today, it really depends on how you want to be showing up. And, and sort of what your passions are, what you want to be delivering, right? So if, if, if you are looking to monetize yourself in more ways than just offering young living. So if you want to do coaching, if you're AFT, you know, if, if you're an Ula coach, you know, there are ways for you to use your vaults to generate revenue and then also to have those things have young living built into them, right? Where the recommendation of young living is built in. So it really is just a matter of how you want to be showing up. I would recommend though, that you have your, your member training vault, you're like your member educational resources vault created. You know, really just as soon as possible, right? Like you, you shouldn't wait to do that until your team is bigger. Because the practices that you put in place right now are the ones that you want to be able to have while your team is much bigger than it is. You can get to a point where you can build unsustainably. And then it becomes really difficult and exhausting and you feel burnt out. If you don't have the organization in place to begin with. So definitely start compiling your member education resources, especially if you're using content providers into online classes in your vaults so that people can peruse that information at their own speed to their liking. And you don't have to bear the burden of having to search out a resource and deliver it to them individually. Now you can say, go check out the member resources vaults and they can find what they're looking for there. All right. There was another one I thought that I saw here. Okay. Yeah. Allison's asking, in my members area vault and only, she edited the my resources page where I put all of my recorded classes that I uploaded to YouTube, texted classes and other websites. But if you're a couple of things, first, it's too busy to see things, especially on mobile. And how do I know my members are seeing it? I've only added one to two members to start and help me test it, sort of asking them, is there a way to tell if they're using it? Yes, there is. And the, the way that you do this is you create an online class. Right? So create an online class with those videos. And what you're able to see on your contacts who are inside your vault is who watched what and how much, right? If you're putting videos in to your online class inside your vault, you know who's watching what and whether they even finished a video. So it's great to have a resource page in a vault, but if you're trying to create an educational resource, it's really best to use an online class. The way that we do this, like I was mentioning earlier, it involves embedding sways, but you can also add videos in those as well. So Greg's actually showing you here. You know, this is where you can actually see on your individual content, who is engaged with what.
There's also at a kind of a system level on your dashboard as well as under your my site activity. If you have views in your member area, those will show up kind of generally here like, oh, there's three views on your member area. So you can see kind of general trends there as well. As you're, you know, as that grows. If you have two people viewing it now, you can totally go into their contact and, and look at them too, like, like Ashley was saying.
And I'm typing this in for Jen here, but, but for those of you who are not familiar with vaults and member areas on get oiling. Obviously we do have on our YouTube channel, plenty of things. There's one about, you know, taking your member area off of Facebook. There is, you know, having your own member area on your own website. We've got a lot of content on YouTube that does this, but if you go to get oiling.com forward slash member training, you're going to get inside of a member area and vaults. You're going to actually see a full breakdown while you're like immersed in the actual environment. So you go to this landing page and actually here we go. Here's an example of a funnel that we have that helps our members on an automated basis, access our training about member areas. So you go to get oiling.com forward slash member training, you enter on this landing page and, and once you do that, we know, you know, you're tagged, you're in the member training vault and you get access to that vault automatically. All right. Camille asks, what is the best way to collect a full name on a landing page? So it won't automatically create a brand new contact that have to merge with an existing contact. And sometimes I don't know who it is, if I only see a first name and the email and phone are not pieces of info that I already have, so I can't match it. So all right. So if an email address matches, our system will actually kind of hash that out, right? And combine that. But one of the facts of, you know, putting these automation pieces into place and having an internet marketing based system working for you in your business is that duplicates are a reality. People are not going to remember which email address they used or which one to use next, when they want to get a piece of information. I personally am double subscribed to a bunch of different lists because I've done that myself. It's not super consequential if you're using tags, right? If you're using tags and you are gearing your communication to your contacts based on how they're tagged, then you'll be effective whether you've got duplicates or not. But it's, it's a, just a fact. It's just a reality of what we do. So it's, it's going to happen no matter what. All right. Is there somewhere we can see what get oiling looks like from the prospect versus the user? Yeah. When you're creating, excuse me, when you're creating your site, you always have the option to hit view. Right? So maybe if we can just go to Jane, Jane's website. And show them what it looks like from the front page of her website. There's always a view my site button inside of your dashboard where you can, where you can find the link to do this. And there's also a view option on landing pages and custom pages that you're creating. So yeah, you click that button and see Jane here has a custom page. There's a, there's a link to her blog. There is a link here to a landing page that puts them into her lead group and her get oiling vault. And then there's also a newsletter subscription as well. All right. Is there a way to contact? Or sorry, to filter contacts by zip code, Greg?
Yes, there is. Click on manage in the context menu and the filters box. I might've moved too fast. So context manage and then click filters here. There is a postal code field, code field where you can type in your zip code and filter by that. I probably don't have anybody on this account, but that will definitely filter by the postal code. If you need to filter by more than one, which is common with postal codes, you can definitely put in additional contacts here. Although my keyboard is freaking out and going turkey. But yeah, you can put comma and then multiple zip codes there. And it'll search for multiples. And I, since I just made those up, they're not in Jane's account, but that's how you would do it.
Awesome. Awesome. Guys, remember bring your questions over to the Q and A. I see questions coming in on the chat here. Guys, that the circular option menu bar, that is, those are just images that were uploaded. So I created images and then hyperlinked to the images like they were buttons. It's pretty cool. This is something that Alison Marshall teaches. I think, don't, do we have a link to her course on our, on the get oiling homepage?
We do. If you just go to get oiling.com and then you scroll down a ways, there's a partner section. Let's get past the pop up down here. Partners, we have the custom website design tutorial where Ally teaches you how to do, to make an amazing website like that. I did see some comments or a question about like, can you see, like, what's the pre-built websites? If you go to get oiling.com and click on FAQ, we'll be able, there's a whole list of options. Oh, right over here. On the right hand side, showing some existing customers who use the system as well as the sample site section. This shows you all the pre-built website themes that we have already, ready to go. And you can click on those and see like, you know, this is what our basic oils website theme looks like. These websites you get right out of the box. If you're watching this, you're like, oh my gosh, there's all this tech stuff. This is what you get. You get a beautiful shareable website right out of the moment that you sign up. You don't have to do any extra work if you don't want to. And it even comes with a pre-built funnel if you enable one of the landing pages. So yeah, a lot of that work is done for you, but you can totally make a, make it your own too.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Elise asks, if I create a leg builder link, can that builder then access their own contact manager and set up their own vaults? Or will it link back to whatever I currently have set up? The answer is the latter. They will be able to use that. Basically it's, it's a link that will then like populate their correct enroller information when someone clicks off to the young living site. That's really what it is. If someone were to enter information on a lead form on that page, it would go into your contact manager. Or into your vault in that instance. All right, Jen, are there any of the pre-built good oiling campaigns that you would recommend using as a starting point for a new retail customer campaign? Had a new retail customer from a social, summer social event, no class, and would like to follow up and slow trip info going forward. So we do have a new members campaign, but it is geared more toward the, the PSK. I would consider even like, you know, looking at the new prospects campaign and potentially using that. Because you know, this is a retail customer and what we're really wanting to do is to drip information that can move them toward membership and ER and so on. So I would, I would take a, take a look, read through the, the new prospect campaign. Obviously I don't, you know, this might not be something that comes up often for you, but it may be an opportunity for you to maybe copy that campaign. And then have that for use in the future for a retail customer that you're moving toward becoming a member. All right. Jean had a follow-up question about these zip codes. Is it possible to put the three, like the first three numbers of a zip code followed by some X's or something? Like, is there a way to, to filter that way?
I think there is. I would have to confirm, but I don't know that there's anybody in here that actually has a zip code in this specific account. We just have a number here and see if this actually comes up with anything. It might not. I'd have to actually look into that to, to make sure. I think it does, but yeah, I'd have to confirm on that one.
All right. Yeah. Yeah. So go into yours with your video uploaded and, you know, definitely like, you know, give it a shot. Like it's just a search, right? And, and let us know what you see. All right. Alison asks, I feel completely lost with vaults and know I'm not using them as well as I could be. Is the best way to back to training in your vaults or go back to your Thursday trainings on YouTube? So if you want the breakdown of, you know, what they are, how to set them up, how to use them, then you want to go to get oiling.com forward slash number training. Because that is, I mean, that, that really is the most complete resource. You can go back and look at, at videos in our YouTube channel. It's youtube.com forward slash get oiling. You can look up member area, you can look up vault, you can look up, you know, group. Those types of terms might find, you know, lead you to some of, of the additional trainings you'd be looking for. But I think really importantly, in terms of, you know, whether you're using the, the way that you, you could be. I think the, the thing that you need to remember is like, what, what's the outcome that you're looking for, right? Like, do you, do you want them to lead themselves through education? Do you, because I mean, I think the, the idea of having a resource page with a ton of links, while yes, it's busy, it's still a thing that if someone asks you a question, you could say, go to the resource page in the vault. And, and what you've done there is created a system. And, and what you've done there is created a system. And like, just the fact that you've got this one thing. It doesn't have to be perfect for it to do extraordinary things for your business. And one of the most extraordinary things you can do in this business is to create a system where you're pointing to information and not being the deliverer of all types of information. When you don't have to hold someone's hand to get them to the information they need and you're pointing them to it and empowering them to take action to figure things out, you're creating leverage. And that's the thing you want to duplicate. And the way that you present Young Living and the way that you support your members and in the way that you encourage your builders will never get anyone anywhere by dragging them or babying them, right? What we have to do is just provide something that we can point to. And so there's no wrong way to do this, I think, most importantly. Like, you can always improve and continue, stay around the campfire here. We'll keep giving you ideas and we've got a lot of training on this. And getoiling.com/membertraining does go into the granular detail of how to set this up and what your options are. But, but it's okay for it to be just exactly what it is for you right now. If you've got that resource page that we talked about. All right, is there a copy and paste option for content for those of us that this is rocket science for? So it depends on the content. We do have a number of, under landing pages, we've got, we've got landing page templates that are kind of pre-made for you. There are funnels that are already done for you when you set up your system. There's beautiful front page. You know, there's a guide that we already made that you give away, you know, as a campaign for new prospects. It's already written. And then of course, if you work with our content partners, you can get their content into your system. If you were a part of Martha Krejci's Go For Gold, you get the funnels and the campaigns that we wrote and the pages even to use as templates along with the instructions on how to swap them out and edit them. So it becomes less rocket science, the more strategy you have going into it, the more preparation you have. And then of course, if you've got somebody that already wrote the stuff for you, then like, you're almost there. So definitely check out our content partners for that purpose. All right, and the sort option for zip codes, can you type the first two numbers? So definitely give that a shot. We were just talking about that, not super clear at this point.
I did try that in a different window where you guys can see. And it does actually wildcard everything automatically. So if you type in the number one, it'll find any zip code that has a one in it anywhere. So you can narrow it, it'll automatically do that.
Perfect, perfect. All right, let's see, Jen says, just GetOiling Grow Workspace have pre-made campaigns for international markets. I know some classes are available for Spanish in Canada, but does it go beyond that? In terms of Grow Workspace, I know that they have been steadily adding new market and specifically Spanish language to their bundles. You're going to want to check just for the bundles that you have and what access they have. But almost everything that they have available has a link inside of the bundle and Grow Workspace that will import stuff directly into your GetOiling account. And specifically the things that import are saved replies for newsletters and then campaigns for email and text. And so where those exist in other languages and compliant with other markets, you're going to see that information inside of your Grow Workspace account. Let's see, since the GetOiling site ties in to the members info, is there a way to subscribe to Young Living's personal website link? I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, Nina. But what does, yeah, go ahead.
I think, yeah, so you don't, you don't have to have, I think, their personal website, if that's what you're asking. Because this does link off, you know, if you look at all of our, go to our FAQ page and link, you know, look at the websites that are built already. Those all do like, for example, when you click on place an order, it passes your member number along. Or if you're down here in the product section and you click on one of these products, it will actually pass along your member number. So you don't technically need it. I mean, if there's another reason that you'd like it, you can certainly have multiples. But many people don't need to have both.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Carrie says, I'm joining late today. Hi, glad you're here. Not sure if you covered this, am I able to add a button to the top right of my website? And in the center, would like to add the order now in both places. So, hmm.
You could with a, what it might sound like is like, because you can personalize the menu that appears over here. So that might be the place to start if you wanted a link over here. It wouldn't look like a button, it's going to look like a link like this. But you can do that under my site settings and then click on site menu. And then you can add, let's say, we want a top level link that would be called, choose the menu item type of menu header. And then let's see, would you want it to call order now? And then you just put in whatever link that you want in there and then maybe open a new window. And then that would, that would add that to the menu. People can click there. And as far as adding the button a little bit lower, that's where you would use the page builder, I think. That would be to, you know, make a custom homepage. If you want, if you're using one of the built-in themes and you just want to add an order now link in there, you can totally do that or a button. That would be easy enough to do under my story and photo here in the my site menu. And you could just put something into the story here. I think Jane's is just text. However, you could create a fancy looking button in Canva or whatever. We'll upload that as the graphic and then link that as your order now button. Or you can just have text, so.
You could have it on the homepage as well. If we look at the holistic mama link over here, let's see, nope, maybe not that one. Her homepage, yeah. So you could, and what I did in this section was I just used the for image section and just swapped the images out for these little circular images. And guys, guys, hey, I'm not a graphic designer, like super not. I literally, not kidding, I used keynote on Mac to make these images that you see here, right? This is not Photoshop, like I am not that tech girl, I'm not. So you could have one of these, the placent order. So you make an image that says that and it could be on your page just like this. And this, guys, if you want to see a full breakdown of how to do this, Allison Marshall has a course for sale on the front page of our site. And there are so many beautiful examples of folks who have used her strategies to build beautiful homepages in GetOiling. All right, there's a question, if we could go, since we're here, under pricing and features, Greg. We got a question about the $49 monthly subscription. So our premium plan, how can we find out all the capacity, the capability of Zoom subscriptions that are included? So you can see Zoom here, you have up to 100 attendees. Now, if you do need to expand capacity and you're not ready to move to another level, get in touch with us. We do have the ability to kind of customize what you've got for all different kinds of things. Like if you needed to add a vault, but you're not ready to move up from another plan, like there are ways for us to adjust that. It's not totally set in stone. So definitely get in touch if you have more questions about that. Terry asks, how do you import a classroom Grow Workspace into your GetOiling account? The way that this is set up currently is from your Grow Workspace bundles, you're actually going to get a GetOiling sharing link that'll import a campaign. And so it would be a campaign based class. If you wanted to embed a sway from Grow Workspace. And there was a question that I saw earlier about what a sway is. Grow Workspace uses them, they're beautiful, they're a Microsoft file type that you can kind of scroll through and it animates. You can embed that on a page. I like to embed them inside of lessons, inside of a member area for education. But for the class, if we're talking about like the text class, then you would just use their, their sharing button. If you're talking about maybe, you know, like the Facebook classes or Instagram classes that they offer, you would want to import those images over separately.
I just added a link in there too, to a training we did with Grow Workspace, if she wants to, if you want to watch that as well.
And if you go to our YouTube channel and you search for sway, there's several there. We show you how to make a funnel with one, all, all kinds of cool stuff. Does Martha's Go For Gold utilize Grow Workspace or did she create her own? No, we're, we're all friends, but no, Martha and I created the resources that are in GetOiling. So it's, you know, what Martha says and I put it together there for you guys in GetOiling. In, in GetOiling connected to Go For Gold. So there's a lot of resources you can get just from inside of that, that program that does connect just like any of our other content providers directly into your GetOiling site. All right. Can you go live in Facebook? Yes, so if you're with, with Zoom, yes. And that's actually the case at any of our membership subscription levels, right Greg? You can like, if you wanted to broadcast a Zoom, you, there's, there's a way to broadcast that out on Facebook or on YouTube or on like Facebook Workplace or whatever that's called. And yeah, that's, that's at premium, that's at all of our levels that have Zoom. All right, let's see, all right. Allison says, they're recommended part of the personal websites to send prospects to. I only get one vault with my subscription or I would have to thought send them to a prospect area, create a one minute story, wondering where the best place to put that right now. I have it under my story, would love to send prospects to the place. Okay, so I would, if you have one vault, if you have a single vault on your plan, so if you're at basic, use that vault for member education. Because that's the thing, like managing your member base is the thing that sucks up most of your time as you grow. That does not, like, it doesn't contribute to your growth, right? It continues, it contributes to maintenance, but getting into management and maintenance and out of working with prospects is going to stall you at your rank forever, right? So use your one vault, if you have one vault for member education, so that that's leverage. And then in terms of where you want to send prospects to, you should be creating content that's interesting to your prospects, right? And then have that, that link in your content to your funnel for your leads. And then what you want to do in the campaign and the copy of your funnel is to have them reach out to you, have them respond to the emails, respond to the texts that you have a conversation with them. Because if your goal is to engage with prospects, your goal is to get them on a one-on-one with you. So everything that you do is in service of getting connection with people, establishing rapport with people, establishing trust with people, so you can get on the phone, make the recommendations, sign them up as a member, right? That's the whole point of that. So where you send them on your site should be to content that serves them, that points to a funnel that gets them closer to talking with you, right? Now, it, once they are a prospect and you want to share Young Living with, with them, you can then share any of our pre-made templates, like our site templates that talk about different features of products and product lines. But if it's just a general prospect, serve them with content on your blog, move them closer to a one-on-one with you with a funnel. And then of course, when you want to have a presentation with them, you start your Zoom call and then you scroll through the website together and you show them these different elements and you talk about how you can help them and you sign them up. And then you put them in your member area to get educated, right? Full circle. All right, on, Carrie asks, on my story page, Meet Carrie isn't defaulted in. Can I edit that, change the font, et cetera? The story, the story headline here.
Yeah, so let's see, I wonder, do we have a page that we can see that on? I think one of your landing, one of the landing pages here has that. Let's close all my 100 tabs that I have. Let me view, view the landing page just to show you what the story looks like. So this is, I think, the section, this also appears on if you're using a built-in website theme. Carrie, I don't know if you are or not. But what you can do, you can change the headline, you can change the text here and of course, the photo. And as far as, so I'll show you where that is, it's under my site, my story and photo. You can change the headline, you can change the text. The text area, it does allow you to change the font with the editor. So we could choose, you know, a different font here that maybe more fits your needs. For the headline itself, the headline, there are some settings for that. If you're on the premium or higher plan with GetOiling under my site settings here in the menu, there's a custom colors and fonts button. And this lets you change what the headline font is. And I believe that would also change this here, this is considered a headline font. So you'd be able to change some of that on this page, on that, on that specific plan. But otherwise, without that, you can change the font in the body text area, but not the headline.
So, so if you want a specific text then for your headline, then select the headline text in your custom or in your, your font setups, right? What you should be doing if you're branding yourself and you're picking fonts and stuff like that, whatever your headline font would be, would what you would want this to show up as anyway. All right, Terry says, I currently have my new members training in a campaign. Would like to move it into a vault or class, so I know who completed it. How do I do that? Yeah, so basically what you do and the way that I would do this is if you don't have your campaign inside of a word processor document, which if you wrote it yourself, you should definitely have it in a word processor document because it's just easier to do the writing off of the platform and then bring it in, right? So you aren't layering two different, you know, sides of the brain working at the same time and frying yourself out. So what you're going to do is, is if you don't have that, collect that. So grab the data from each one of the messages in the campaign, put it in sequence inside of a word processor document, then go over and create an online class that just has, you know, it doesn't have to have video, it doesn't have to have anything other than the words. And then you can actually see, you know, who does each lesson. So you could absolutely take the same kind of information that would be in a campaign, put it into an online class inside of a member area and then you're able to track that information. All right, can Zoom recordings be linked into permanent classes with our website? You will want to take your Zoom recordings and upload them securely to something like Vimeo, especially if you want this to be something that lives on in a gated fashion. If it's something that you want the whole world to be able to find, so they get into your funnels, become your lead, sign up as your members and put it on YouTube, right? And you can embed a YouTube video inside of our classes. But if you want it to be something that's protected, that's really only for people who qualify to be in that vault, then you want to use Vimeo or Wistia or something like that. So you're going to want to take the, the actual file, video file. And after you edit it, if you need to, you upload that to that platform and then use the link that they give you to put into the class for GetOiling. All right, Tammy says, I have personal friends and prospects, warm market. Is it smart or efficient to create a contact card? I'm asking, so if I want to invite to a class personally through GetOiling before they have viewed a website or landing page? Yeah, oh my goodness, this is actually something that we talk about in Go For Gold. Or it's just sort of, well, it's not like a specific strategy we talk about in Go For Gold. It's just something that a lot of people do. And that is to, you know, when you're reaching out to your warm market and prospecting, you should be putting them into your contact manager. And one of the great ways you can do this is actually to download your contacts from Facebook, right? You can actually do that and there's, Google it, there's a way to like download your contacts into like a CSV file from Facebook. And then you just upload that like you would from the VO, like tag them as prospects, right? Or tag them as Facebook friends. To, to be fair, you're not going to be getting email addresses in the majority of cases. It'll just be names, but those are people you're in contact with and those are people that you want to communicate with and prospect. And so now that information is there. And then once maybe they opt into a landing page, then that information updates. That person, you know, now has their email and phone and everything in there. Awesome, great, great questions today, you guys. Thank you for sticking around and asking so many awesome questions. Remember to check your email for the slides from today's call so that you can follow through on your own to set these things up. And, and of course, we'll have that as a recording, or recording, as a link below the recording of this video. And yeah, and that's it. Oh, and the worksheet, right? Fill out the worksheet. Next week, we're going to be talking about your campaign. And then after that, we will be talking about your lead magnet. Maybe we'll go in the opposite direction, maybe let, let me know in the comments. You want to learn about the campaign next or the lead magnet next? We could go either way. So we will, we'll be moving on to the other components of your funnel. The worksheet you received in your email, you'll get another copy of that in your email when we send out the recording of this. And of course, it'll be below the video on YouTube. So get that funnel planner worksheet filled out. What do you want them to do? Where do you want to send them? What do you want to tell them? And we'll be continuing to break down these components so you can build this stuff up next week. So thank you guys for being here and we'll see you next time.
Thanks, everybody.